Push to lock. Good evening. Okay, good evening. It is now five thirty-three. We have a quorum. We're gonna go, go ahead and begin. Um, little discombobulated here. Okay, uh, let's see here. It is Tuesday, June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. This is a reg- regular board meeting of the Adalanto Elementary School District. And again, the time is now five thirty-three. That's all our call to order. Can I get roll, roll call, please?
Trustee Akas.
Present.
Trustee La French.
La French present.
Trustee Turner. Trustee Webster. Webster present. Trustee Benz.
And Benz present. Uh, let's please stand to do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, be, begin.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. Okay, go, go, going on to two, adoption of the agenda, agenda two point zero one proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business.
Madam President, we do not have any.
Okay, we're gonna go, go on to two point zero two, adoption of the agenda. Can, can I get a motion, please?
I motion to adopt the agenda as stated.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna give the motion to trustee Turner and the second to trustee Akas. And can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Akas?
Aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye. Motion passes five zero. Okay, move, moving on to closed sessions declarations, we will be taking items three point zero two and three point zero five into closed session. Um, and go, going on to four, uh, public testimony. I believe we have one speak speaker and that's Jennifer Raider speaking for ADTA.
Madam President, we do have that little blurb that we want to read.
Oh, that's okay. Yes, can, can you please read, read the blurry thing?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Protocols for speakers. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session agenda items only must complete and submit a speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Mr. Kraus. If I read that, we'd be here all day. All right, Mrs. Ray.
Thank you very much, Madam President, for letting me go. I'm here tonight representing ADTA. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the cabinet and board. I was hoping to come before you today with a glowing report of summer school success, student engagement, and kudos for the administrative classified custodial staff for making it all possible. That is all still true, but it is grossly overshadowed by a huge disappointment in our expected paychecks. Due to some error or glitch, the stipends owed us, we're not on the July first paycheck, but are anticipated for the fifteenth. This may not seem like a huge deal to you, but it affects us negatively in many ways. It's disrespectful. At the very least, we should have been warned of this happening as soon as the business office realized it. To tell us now is just careless, because the district does not care. It does not care that we're negatively affected, that we have made plans that are now affected. This needs to be rectified immediately, with checks being cut for our teachers right away. Not next week, not on the fifteenth, but now. Mistakes happen, certainly, and we understand that. Of course, we show grace, but when you realize you've made a mistake, you correct it by any means possible as soon as possible. We were promised payment on July first for matters agreed upon during our last settlement. This didn't happen, and the district needs to immediately rectify this mistake for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I believe we have no other speakers on closed session items, correct?
We have three speakers that are, Xenia, do they identify as closed session?
No, they're open session.
Okay, so no more for closed session at this time, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, we will go, go on to recess to closed session. Um, can, can I get a motion?
Webster motions.
And I need a second. Okay, I'll give it to Turner. I need a vote, please.
Trustee Webster? Aye. Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee La French?
Trustee La French, aye.
Trustee Akas?
Trustee Akas?
Aye.
Trustee Benz? And Benz, aye. Motion passes five zero. The time is now five forty. All right, good evening. Thank, thank you for your patience. I know we run late. I'm sorry, sorry, I really, really am. Um, I do need a motion to table item three point zero, zero, three.
Madam President, we do need to reconvene.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Sorry, can I get a roll, roll call, please?
Trustee Webster? Webster present. Trustee Turner?
Present.
Trustee La French?
La French present.
I'll take note that trustee Akas left the meeting at eight oh six. Trustee Benz?
Benz present. The time is now eight eleven, eleven. Okay, first thing, now we're, we have a quorum. So the first thing I need is uh, the board, I, I need a motion to table item three point zero three to have a sec, second closed session at the end of the meeting. The motion. Okay, I got a motion from Turner. I need a second. Webster seconds, okay, and please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster? Webster, aye. Trustee Turner?
Aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye. Motion passes four zero. Okay, going on to seven, closed session report. Uh, here we go. The board took action to accept superintendent Dr. Keenan Mitchell's resignation effective June third, third, thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Also, um, the board took action to approve a settlement agreement of one pending action. Okay, I know she's taking notes there. Okay, uh, let's go ahead and move on to eight. Um, public testimony, eight point zero two. Do I have a representative from ADTA? Yes, ma'am. Hold on, I don't think you're on.
Thank you. Good evening again. Um, I want to express my thanks to Mr. Kraus, who's promised to look into our issue with the stipends that we're not on the, that will not be on the June, on the July first paychecks, and I appreciate very much his promise to do everything he can to rectify that situation. I would also like to tell you that summer school has been a joy. It's been going very, very well. I have not heard anything negative from any of the campuses. Teachers are having a good time. Kids are having a good time. We're doing art and PE and enrichment and just having a great time. Um, I would like to say specifically about Eagle Ranch, and I also know Gus Franklin falls in this category. They are super clean campuses. They are pristine. It's a joy to teach at those schools. They're clean and the cafeteria smells good. It's just, it's, um, we'd just like to say that Eagle Ranch and Gus Franklin are really, really, really clean schools. So thank you to those custodial staffs. They've worked really, really hard, and I made sure that they knew it, that we appreciate that very much. So that's really all I have to add to my earlier comments.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Uh, do, do I have a representative from CSEA?
Yes, Madam President, Mrs. Diane Lynn, who I believe is on Zoom, Mr. Sinatra?
Yes, she is. I'm unmuteing her now.
Uh, good evening, trustees, cabinet, certified staff, classified staff, and all others attending this meeting. First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Moran and his negotiating team for our classified health insurance cap increase and also for the MOUs that are still being processed. On another issue, I have been informed that some of our members that work summer school, also known as the extended school year, aren't getting paid on our June thirtieth check. We understand that errors do happen, and we are all human. However, our contract states under salary five point four under payroll errors. Um, whenever it is determined that an error has been made in the calculation or reporting in any bargaining unit member payroll or in the payment of any bargaining unit member's salary, the district shall, within five workdays following such determination, provide the employee with a statement of the correction and a supplemental payment drawn against any available funds. Um, this has happened in the past, and a check was issued, and I'm hoping these checks will be issued within the five, the timeframe of the five days. Many of our members have made plans, and we're counting on this extra salary, especially since our summer school ends on July first. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, um, do you want me to do this one first?
Yes, Madam President, if you will, and then we have three others online.
Okay, so, um, the board calls re- risa, berilas, barillas.
Thank you, board. Um, I, I feel a little bit like it's a punch in the gut that we have yet another superintendent resigning. It's five in ten years now. It's jarring, and it is frustrating that in a time that our kids have experienced so much inconsistency, so much disruption to their lives, we're further disrupting our district. Dr. Mitchell was not above reproach. He was not above criticism, but wow. This is embarrassing. Um, it's also a little concerning that the life insurance for, for trustee members is being increased to one hundred fifty thousand um, while CSEA bargaining unit members are getting an increase from twenty to fifty thousand. And when I look at life insurance, I see that as um, the actual value we place on life, numerical value that we place on the life of, lives of our personnel. And so it's really jarring that these are the dollar signs we are attaching to our trustees against our actual staff and faculty. Um, far be it for me to ask you to vote against your own personal interests, but it seems wildly inappropriate that this is what we're stating we value. So, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you.
Yes, Madam President, the next person we'd like to welcome is Mr. John Allen. Mr. Sinatra, do you see Mr. Allen in the Zoom room?
Yes, I'm asking him to unmute now.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies, gentlemen, and my friends beyond the binary. I speak tonight to address the lack of foresight and accountability that this district administration has has and is currently displaying. Like others who have already spoken tonight, I was shocked to find my paycheck lacking in agreed-upon funds. While these stipends are laughable compared to what other surrounding districts have agreed to pay their employees as the cost of living skyrockets, many teachers and faculty have already planned non-refundable vacations, time-sensitive trips, and are dependent on this money to pay for basic necessities, or in my case, the ability to pay for my daughter's birthday party and presents. Not all of us have a forty million dollar reserve to fall back on. Being told we can fix this in two weeks is irresponsible, untrustworthy, and in the past has cost your faculty considerably more in taxes. We, as a district, already hemetrate qualified teachers and staff due to what is being coined the great teacher resignation. Yet we remain uncompetitive in the market with fewer and fewer people entering a profession of education. You speak out loud of the many great things you foresee and how you wish to be the shining district on the hill, but your actions and spending habits scream the opposite. Other districts near us with fully paid benefits and higher salaries than us and desperation for teachers have taken to advertising through social media. They're even willing to take all years of experience. If they are struggling to fill positions, imagine the greater struggle that we are gonna face soon. You can and need to do better than this. Your certificated staff is and has been outraged and demoralized for your responses, and the moralists and your responses so far have been lackluster at best. For the sake of this district, its staff, and more importantly, its students, you need to do better. This district can no longer afford empty promises, unwillingness to confront reality, and the constant revolving door of administration and faculty. Remember this now as you fix our missing pay. Remember this when you make decisions, and remember this again when negotiations start again. Thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you.
At this time, Madam President, we'd like to call Michelle Walden. Mr. Sinatra is Miss Walden in the Zoom.
Yes, there I am. I'm unmuting them now.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, board. This morning, I received a phone call from a teacher in tears because she didn't have her stipend money on her check, and she was wondering if it was just her or if it was everyone. You see, she is continuing her education and has to pay for summer school before she can register for the fall semester, and the money is due now, not in fifteen days. After talking with other teachers, we discovered that none of us had received our back pay, and no one knew why. Hundreds of emails, texts, phone calls, and social media posts with a lot of questions yet no answer. People with medical procedures, vacations, classes, scheduled projects that can't be done during the school year, things that all cost money, money we agreed upon during our negotiations, money that we were told by Mr. Kraus on May twelfth, we would receive on July first. Money has already come out of our pockets. To receive a hastily written email from Mr. Kraus at five twenty-six, literally four minutes before the board meeting starts, which I'm sure everyone knew was going to be full based on the amount of emails received, with some lame excuse about us not receiving an email earlier today saying the financial system had some glitches. What glitches? No explanation. Not that an explanation at this point even matters. A small sorry for any inconvenience, like we are just a customer looking for something that is out of stock. You knew about these glitches long ago. Why did you choose to not inform us as soon as you knew there would be a delay? How little respect you have for hundreds of teachers' lives you have affected once again, and during our time of recuperation and regeneration for the next school year. You guys literally make us fight tooth and nail all year just to receive a portion, just a portion of the cola that is given to you by the state. We have to fight for every cent. Then you tell us how much you appreciate teachers. We couldn't do it without you. Yet behind closed doors, you prove time and time again that you don't appreciate us. We mean nothing to you, our schools, or our kids. It is time to put your money where your mouth is and fix this now. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one more speaker, Ms. Kimberly Smith. Mr. Sinatra is Ms. Smith in the Zoom room?
Yes, they are. Asking them unmute now.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, board members, executive board members, esteemed colleagues and guests. Oh, agreement, a negotiated and typically legally binding arrangement between parties as to a course of action, also meaning the absence of incompatibility between two things, consistency. I feel as if I have just spoken about consistency, and now here I am speaking about a similar word, agreement. Jen Raider, our ADTA president, as well as two other union members, have already outlined to the board the immediate issue that stands before us. Well, actually, the one that stands before the teachers. We had an agreement with the district that we would be paid our stipends on July first. This agreement occurred a few months ago with plenty of time to work out the glitches in the financial system. Once again, teachers are given the short end of the stick and expected to just accept apologies and be content with the fact that fiscal services is actively working on completing a July fifteenth payroll where both of these should be paid out. I don't like the word "should be paid out," not "will be." How is it that this was an agreement that we were notified of on May twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, at nine oh two AM and was somehow unable to be fulfilled in almost two months' time? We are expected to get things done immediately with accuracy, with a sense of urgency in order to meet the needs of our students. When will there be a sense of urgency to give us the respect that we have earned, that we deserve? When will we get to stop grovelling at the feet of the district to get out our just dues? I tell you, that day is coming, because I, like many of my fellow teachers, are rather tired of catching the pennies that have been tossed our way. In the meantime, how about the district honor their agreement and cut us the checks that we were promised and that we have already done the work for without payment? Thank you for your time and hopefully for your consideration in this matter. Have a good night.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you.
Madam President, that completes all the public comments this evening.
All right, thank you. Let's go, go ahead and go on to cabinet reports, nine point zero, zero, one, events and future activities significant to the district.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, members of the board, members of the community. I am excited to share a few comments related to district activities. As you heard earlier, I was pleasantly pleased to hear from several of our staff members. That summer session has been going well. It's always exciting. I've had the opportunity to go out there and visit the sites, and I'll be doing that again. Our last day is this Friday, and so I will be out there, and I know a cabinet as well. We'll go out there and visit the sites as the last day for summer session and wish our staff and our students off for the rest of the summer. So we're excited about that. And this evening, you have a new item there, cabinet report. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Moran and then Dr. Dweisin to just share a few quick updates related to the work that they're doing in their department. So, Mr. Oh, okay, on Zoom, Dr. Dweisin, if you, if you can unmute and share some great things going on in academic services, that would be great.
You're on mute. Oh, she can't unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Board of Trustees. So academic services right now is busily closing out the end of the school year. So you'll see several items on the agenda tonight in pointing to that direction. So this is the time of the year where we're heavily into next year and planning all that happens and goes through. Um, our team is very excited. On August first, we're going to have a family summit in which families are able to come in. We're gonna have a guest speaker and also have different resources, community agencies, all coming together to have a welcome back for our students and our children in the community. So we are really excited about that. And then we are also busy planning and preparing for our August third welcome back for teachers. And so we're excited to present more of those details in the coming, by, for sure, by the next board meeting so that we are ready to roll out and launch our new school year. Um, and those are the two major updates that we have for academic services at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dweisin, and now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Moran for a few quick updates on activities and human resources.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kraus. Good evening, everybody. So in regards to HR, so I'd like to report that we've hired six new certificated staff members. We also, with our HR staff, we have a, we're planning a two-day new hire orientation for certificated staff in collaboration with ADTA. Recently, several of our managers in HR attended an HR boot camp through AXA that covers a variety of things, hiring contracts and variety of things. It was great to know that the presenter, a former assistant supervisor from Castro Valley, is the presenter. Uh, I did my Personnel Academy with her when I was up in the Bay Area, and so our staff in HR, Dana and Alejandra, shared that with me recently, and so I know Sherry personally. She was our presenter. So it's great that they're getting that training from her. We also, for the summer, we're having HR trainings for classified and certificated staff. Um, we do have a calendar for that, the end of July and the first weekend in August. And that's, that's the update with our, our HR report. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board, for the opportunity to share out some of the great things that are going on in our district. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, now it's time for ten governing board members' reports and announcements. Um, who would like to go first? Or do I want me to just pick somebody? Trustee La French?
Thank you. I was trying to unmute myself. So I don't want to reiterate the same thing over and over again. However, I do want to say that I do sincerely apologize on the glitch that took place today regarding the stipends and the retro pay. Um, I do truly understand, you know, what it's like to expect something, and then because of technical difficulties, it doesn't take place. And I know that the district right now is working diligently on trying to make sure everyone gets paid as soon as possible, but I do sincerely apologize. I also wanted to say that I am so excited regarding the summer program was very successful, and I am looking forward to a new school year. I have confidence in our cabinet that we will start off our school, new school year strong and ready to support our staffing, our children, and the communities that we serve. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, trustee Webster?
Um, yes, so good afternoon, good evening. See where I'm at today. I want to
I want to start tonight's comments off with a quick comment to an email I got this week. Got an email from a teacher within our district highlighting how great her students did on the test. And far too often, I feel like I get to hear a little bit more of the bad than I do the good. So I do want to take a few minutes tonight and I want to tell all of our students how amazing they did last year, to see those results, to see that teacher's scores, and just to see how hard those kids worked on those tests. Once again, they did so great and I can't wait for next school year. Along with summer session, I hear that we had some amazing deal trips that they went on. They saw awesome things. They had amazing fun and I cannot wait to see some pictures, I hope. Wink, wink. And then I just want to take my last moment and make a comment that I got to walk around this amazing deal last Friday. I got to meet a lot of our staff from IT to transportation to operations. And I got to learn some amazing facts about what just all goes, like goes on behind scenes. So I'm really blessed to get that opportunity to have like more of an inside look at it and I look forward to hearing more. So thank you and I appreciate everybody being here tonight.
Trustee Turner?
I would just like to say thank you for the great attendance. Generally, when school is out, we don't have many participants tuning into our meetings. And I would just like to say thank you for showing up and, you know, hearing what we have to say and what's going on. It's disappointing to hear about the stipends. I know you've waited a whole year doing negotiations in order to receive the money that's due you. So as we sit here, hearing, you know, your concerns, we're feeling the same way as well. And, you know, we've instructed, you know, cabinet to look into this process and try to get those, see what we can do to get these checks out to you because they're, you deserve them. And it's disappointing in summer that you, you're waiting on this money and you can't take the necessary trips or do the necessary things that you anticipate doing. And even though two weeks may not seem like a lot of time, it is a lot of time. You know, I, 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 I contest to that. So I'm so sorry and I know that Mr. Kraus will work diligently and seek every remedy possible to get these checks out to you because you deserve them. Again, to reiterate what my other trustees mentioned, summer school, I'm so happy. This is the first time in a long time that I've heard summer school was a success. And the students sent board members pictures of their art that, when I saw that on my, on my desk, I, it just warmed my heart to see them having fun in summer school. We don't hear that often, fun in school and amazing field trips and the amazing stuff that they're doing every day. So thank you, teachers. Thank you, principals. Thank you, administration for making that happen and making it run smoothly for our kids. I got that same memo that trustee Webster got. And, you know, we always hear 1728 and that we're the last in the, in the county or even the state for that matter. And I know that good things are happening in our schools, even with COVID. And some schools are doing better than others. And I want to acknowledge and congratulate the teachers that their class are excelling. And this particular teacher, I don't have her name in front of me. And I know there's many, 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 many more that are doing a tremendous job. And with COVID back on the rise, hopefully they can get it under control this summer. You know, and me, I, myself, I, I had a bout with it. And I'm doing better. But I just want to say that despite the checks and despite the stipends, I wish you an amazing rest of your summer. And trust me, we're going to do everything that we can to get those checks to you as soon as possible. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, there isn't much more that I can add to that. I just know that Mr. Kraus tries really hard to do a good job. You know, he's real, really earn, earn, earnest in what, what he does. And I know that he will work hard, you know, he's, he really does have a good, good heart at his job. And he's going to do what, what he can to, to rectify what, what has happened. So, and I'm not going to go, go on because we got to go. So thank, and just thank you for creating the good memories for the kids. That's the thing. Okay, let's go on to 11, 11, adoption of the minutes. 11, 11.01 Board Minutes Approved as Written and Ordered Field Regular Board Meeting of June 14th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
Trustee Turner, a motion that we approve the board minutes of June 14th, 2022.
Webster, I second. My pen is bleeding through and making a mess of my thing. Okay, can I get a vote, but please? Trustee Webster? Webster? Webster, I. Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Motion, motion pass passes 400. Okay, go, going on to 12, 12, Staff Reports and Presentations. 12.01 Academic Services Local Control and Accountability Plan Annual Update Overview Presentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Dweisin and she will be presenting on this agenda item.
Thank you so much. Let me share my screen. Okay, are we able to see that all right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, good afternoon, President, or good evening, President, Ben, Board of Trustees, Cabinet, Staff and Community. This evening, I will give an annual update on the Local Control Accountability Plan, otherwise known as LCAP. This is required to be presented and approved alongside the budget yearly. Our objective this evening is to provide an overview of the annual update to the LCAP, provide an update on implementation of the 2021 to 2024 LCAP. Remember, it's a three-year plan. And then also to provide next steps based on community feedback. The Local Control and Accountability Plan is a three-year district plan that describes the goals, activities, services, and expenses to support positive student progress, outcomes in alignment with state and local priorities. So this is actually the end of our first year of this LCAP plan that was put in place a year ago. The LCAP provides an opportunity for districts to share the stories of the how, why they select programs and the different services that are needed to meet local needs. The funds detailed in the LCAP are specifically intended to support improving outcomes for students who are English learners, our foster youth, and our low-income students. So this slide speaks to our 2223 LCAP process for the year. So currently, we're at the end of our year one of our three-year LCAP plan, which is from 2021 to 2024. The requirement is to be, that this update is to be done yearly. So it speaks to the progress, to the goals, and additions can be made at that time every year. Impacts of COVID data is from 2019. And this year's data, for the first time in a few years, we're going to have data coming in for our next year's annual LCAP update to be added to our LCAP plan. Remember, the reason why 2021 was the first year of the LCAP plan was because the year prior to that, while we were in COVID, the state suspended LCAP and they put in place what was called the Learning Continuity Plan. And so that really was specifically to address the needs for our students during COVID. And so when one school's returned in 2021, that's when the LCAP plan that we currently have was put in place. So the opening of schools, the mask mandates on March 11th, all of those were limitations to our implementation as it came to our LCAP plan. So the district has, when this was put in place for the LCAP goals, there were three main goals, student achievement, student supports, parent and family community engagement. So those are the three objectives that were outlined. And this was written prior to my arrival, but this was based on the feedback from the staff, the students, the community. These are the three goals that are outlined in our AESD LCAP plan. So sites were also allocated dollars to support LCAP goals and activities. So what we wanted to see was an alignment between their school plans and the LCAP so that we are all working toward one common goal. So in the development of LCAP for the, we've gathered feedback from parents, staff, students, and community members through meetings. And it was noted that out of these survey responses and Padlet, there were several emerging themes that kept coming up and kept recurring. This was tutoring, this was social emotional learning, counselors and therapists, bully prevention, extracurricular activities, so things like clubs and sports, and then a need for parent engagement classes, so even learning languages, how to help students at home. These were the emerging trends from the feedback received. So updates to the 2223 plan. So this particular plan that we have in front of you, we, some of the updates, so it looks, even though it's, the bulk of it is the same plan for the three years, some of the things that were added and have to be updated every year. So background information was updated, there's a comprehensive support and improvement section was updated to reflect the support to the CSI schools. Engaging Community Educational Partners section was updated. Summary of our educational partner feedback, our early education, social workers, those specifically were items that were added in. You'll hear a little bit more about early education later this evening. Goal analysis sections were updated to include challenges and successes for this year and then budgeting information added and always updated to reflect current amounts aligned to our budgets. So goal number one with student achievement, student achievement will increase in English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, History. Focus on closing the achievement back. So definitely instructional technology, elective coursework, professional learning libraries, all of these items listed before you. And particularly, the new one added this year to the LCAP based on feedback was early childhood materials. And that was new for 2223. And this is based on feedback, particularly our stakeholders, our TK and kinder teachers as well. Goal number two is student support. So we provide every student with specific academic behavioral, social, emotional, and mental and physical health supports to meet their individual needs, especially our English learners, students with disabilities, foster youth, homeless, African-American, and other student groups whose outcomes are the greatest need. And so what's new this year added to or updated in the plan was the social workers. And so that came about through stakeholder input and feedback. And then goal three was our parent, family, and community engagement. So parents, families, community stakeholders will be informed, engaged, and empowered as partners with the Adelanto Elementary School District to support student learning and improve student outcomes. So again, just making sure that we keep up with those things that are going to actively engage our parents. So you see that, I just mentioned our Parent Academy and Resource Fair that we're having on August 1st. We're real excited about our Parents Square communication tool that's going into effect, should go live for this coming school year. That will also allow us to send text messaging and items directly to the phones of parents to increase our parent, our community engagement. And advisory committees, supplemental materials, those are items that would fall under this goal. So here is the timeline that took place. This was initially when the plan was being developed from last year. So all of those items were taken into account and that's when the plan was written. This year is our stakeholder meetings and development timeline. And according to where we came to today with our updates, and you'll see that it began earlier this year, I think, when I was very first arriving in September with that LCAP revision presentation. And then monthly, it's important to note that our sites engage parents and staff to determine need. So they do that through school site council, PTO, coffee with the principal, staff meetings, and then cabinet union, union leadership meetings as well, provide that continuous feedback all through the year. And then you have the additional meetings that are listed there below. So for next year, we heard loud and clear, the need to make sure that we are continuously being strategic and making sure that we're specifically focused on the topic of LCAP. And what that also includes is making sure that monthly, that we're providing a strategic opportunity for our stakeholders to provide feedback directly on that topic. So beginning in October, what we want to do is take a data deep dive. Where are our students at? Based on this year will be the first year that we'll have test data in a while. So looking at that, what is, what is that data telling us? Where do we want to go? And then you'll see each month a different kind of topic is mentioned. And then that way, we're all through the year, making sure that we are getting the feedback that we need. Also, we want to make sure to branch out and maybe hold these stakeholder meetings at various school sites so that we're reaching different areas of the community, not just always at the district office. We recognize that it may be hard for some of our families to get all the way over to the district office. So we want to make sure to provide those strategic opportunities across town to be able to gain additional input and feedback. And this schedule is in addition to what we already have going, coffee with the principal, school site council, staff meetings, in which input will be gathered. And then what we also realize is that not all parents may have access to technology or social media. So in addition to email and texts, we also got a good response back when we sent out the paper surveys, even though we had the electronic one up. So we want to make sure that we are sending out paper surveys at least twice a year so that our parents have the opportunity to state their voice as they need to. So next steps will be to continue implementation of LCAP, begin engaging the community in a monthly strategic stakeholder meeting, provide opportunities for the community to engage in the decision-making in a variety of ways, hold LCAP meeting in places other than the district office, so doing regional, and then keeping the community informed about opportunities to participate throughout the year. Thank you very much.
Board? Board, do you have questions?
I have, well, I have a comment and a suggestion. I was talking to trustee President Benz a while about our LCAP meetings and she had a good suggestion about holding LCAP meetings in trustee areas. So in order for families to be accessible to those meetings, and if they can't make a meeting in that, that particular area, you know, they can always attend another meeting. And my suggestion is to have them at the beginning of the school year so we can really, really, truly get the community and input on LCAP because that is what is required, that is a requirement in order for, to receive our local funding from the state. I would like it to be visual. I would like parents to be notified on a regular basis regarding the LCAP so they can get familiar with what we want to accomplish. So they can get familiar with what we want to accomplish and get their input, because that's really important, especially. Um if we want to increase academic success for our children, we need to get our parents involved. And more community activities for our parents to get involved. We need to welcome them into our schools and into our districts and make them comfortable. Coming to a meeting and asking questions. A lot of parents don't ask questions because they don't know what LCFF mean or LCAP mean. And what those, and how they fit into that, into the, to the development of this program. And I have to tell you. You are essential to this. And this is one of the reasons why, after almost forty-two years, the state changed the way that. The districts receive funding. Everything was restricted. Everyone received the same dollars. And when LCAP and LCFF, LCFF is local control funding formula, local control. That means that funds are given to districts according to their needs. And in Adalanto, we give, get a level of funding. We get everyone in the state of California get a basic grant. And we get that. Then there's a supplemental grant. Some districts get that. And then there's a concentration grant. And some districts get that. Adalanto get all three. And with that, we have to include our community. We have to know what the needs are in our particular. District. Think about your own home. And you've set a budget for your house. Now, your neighbor's budget may be different than your budget. And that's how we set our budget based on our LCAP. And we have to identify the needs of our students and our community. So we need your input. And if we start early. Enough, then we can successfully, you know, prepare a plan that fit our district. And thank you, Dr. DeWise, on, you know, for, you know, there, I'm looking for some of your slides. I see you changed some of your slides, which is good. You know, and and I'm looking forward to next year um to include our parents and, you know, go out and. Show them what the LCAP look like. And it's a plan. The LCAP is a plan. It's different from our budget. Both our budget and our LCAP will be approved tonight. And um. We would like you to be involved in that. So thank you, uh Dr. DeWise on and your team for creating this plan. And moving forward to next year, I know it'll be even better. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Turner. I've made those notes.
Okay, uh tru- trustees, any que- questions?
Um no questions, just a quick comment. I do want to reiterate what trustee Turner said and take a minute to say thank you. Uh Tasha, for your hard work and um preparing this for us. And that's all.
Thank you.
Uh tru- trustee La La French.
I have no comments. Thank you, Dr. DeWise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh the, the only thing I ask is can, can you e- email me the, the slide you showed? Cause the one that I have printed is missing so- some slide and I would like that in in for formation.
I will make that available to all the trustees, yes.
All right. All right. Thank, thank you, Doc, Dr. Dwight, Dwight's on. Okay, so now let's go on to twelve point zero two, act academic ser- services. And annual information on progress towards me- meeting lo- local in- indicate, caters.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board and community. Again, I would like to turn this presentation over to Dr. Dweisin as well for a repeat.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. You go ahead and make sure I'm sharing the right one. So this is just an update for our annual um um local indicator. So this is, needs to be reported annually. Um and it gives an overview of the background significance and monitoring of our local indicators. And this is taken to the. Board yearly as an update alongside the LCAP. So the State Board of Education approved standards for the local indicators that support local education agencies. And measuring and reporting their progress within the appropriate priority area. The local indicators reflect the emphasis on local control. Um and measure priorities that are oriented more to implementation measurement, rather than that summative outcome. And that allows the local community to understand the holistic picture of our LEA's progress. So our district's progress. For each applicable local indicator, LEAs assign one of the three performance levels. So it could be met, not met, or not met for two or more years. So the indicators are related to the student dashboard and we must report those annually. The dashboard is tied to the state assessments and the California accountability system. Um and the LEA is required to annually measure the progress, report the results to the local school board at a regularly scheduled meeting annually. And report the results of the public through the dashboard. So what you have right now, it shows the indicators by priority areas. You will see that there are ten indicators altogether. However, one, two, three, six and seven are the local indicators. So those are um a little bit different. And we're are able to make these reports through surveys, documentation of the ways in which we're meeting those areas, for example. And you will also note that priority four, five, six and eight are tied to quantitative measures. For our local indicators um are qualitative in nature. So the next slides are to inform the board and the public that um Adelanto Elementary School District has met. Um all of those priorities. So priority one is basic conditions at school. Um we met that. So meeting our Williams requirements, one hundred percent. And you see those reports come to our board meetings um quarterly. And so we do uh make sure that we meet for the basic conditions um at our school teams. So we want to thank our. Um custodial facilities, maintenance uh staff for helping us with that. Um priority two is implementation of our state academic standards. We met that goal as well. That's making sure that we're implementing the state standards and reports the results to the local governing board. At a regularly scheduled board meeting um and to the stakeholders through the evaluation rubrics. Priority three is our parent engagement that has been met, which is seeking in- input from parents in decision-making. And promoting parental per- participation in programs. Priority six has been met. LEA administers a local climate survey at least every other year. Um we plan on doing that yearly, so we have a good idea of how we are growing in this area to meet the needs of our students. Priority seven is access to a broad course of study. Additionally, we have met that one as well. So the extent to which students have access to and are enrolled into a broad course of study. That includes the adopted courses of study specified in the California Education Code for grades one through six and grade seven through. Twelve or seven through, six through eight in our case. Um as applicable, including programs and services developed and provided to unduplicated students. And individuals with exceptional needs. And so that concludes our local indicators presentation.
Okay, uh board, do you have any questions? Trustee La La French.
I have no questions.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Thank, thank you, Doc, Dr. Dwight, Dwight's on.
Thank you.
And going on to twelve point zero three, academic ser- services. Un- universal pre-kin- kindergarten planning and im- implementation grant. Plan presentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board and the community. And once again, what a champion. Dr. Dweisin will be presenting. On the universal pre-kindergarten and planning. So Dr. Dweisin, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you. It is, it is my night this evening. Um we have to make sure these get through. So thank you for your patience. So let me um share my screen one more time. Excited to share this one with you. This is our uh UPK or universal pre-kindergarten planning and implementation grant. Um this uh presentation serves as an overview. Um and this is, this plan, it's important to note that this plan is in collaboration with our county peers. Um so we must make sure that it's presented to the board on or before June thirtieth, just as an overview. And we actually have until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five to use these grant funds. So the objectives are to provide an overview of the UPK. I keep calling it UPK. That's what i- it's turned to, but the universal pre-kindergarten planning grant program. And to provide information on the UPK timeline and to share AESD's plan for utilizing these grant funds. So I like this visual. This really just describes um what UPK is. And basically, it's an expansion. Of the state's current mixed delivery system that meets the early learning and the care needs for three and four-year-old children and their families. It includes all existing state and federal early learning, private childcare and extended learning programs. So basically, it's making sure our kids taken care of from an early age, but also throughout the school day. So you'll see some familiar uh topics there, expanded learning opportunities grant, which we, you know, approved earlier. Our ACES, our after-school program, um and then our twenty-first century co- um community learning centers. That's a newer one. Um that, but you will see through this graphic, all the different um agencies, how they're working together to make that UPK umbrella. So uh the purpose of why does it matter for this UPK grant and the purpose of our TK extension? Is we know that ninety percent of brain growth happens before kindergarten. And I'm not going to re- read all of these, but also that the children's learning. Um what's really important at this age is that it's, their learning is developmental. So it's really best promoted through strengths-based, play-based approach to joyful, engaging learning that supports their emotional, social, cognitive. And language development. And really, when you look at this picture and the way, I love this graphic specifically because it talks about the whole child. And when we're talking about um educating our students, we should be looking at it from a whole child perspective. So the implementation, implementation timeline. So for this year, it was all about planning. Um and basically, for any child who turns five, September to December is eligible for TK. That's been in place for some time. Um but what it is, is making sure that there are plans for a full day UPK um by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. I'd like to recognize um Adalanto because for uh several years, full-day transitional kinder. Was offered, is offered, continues to be offered in our districts. Um which is really great for our students and their early learning developmental needs. Um from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five, districts are required to expand TK. To serve two months more birthdays each year. So you're going to keep going a few years. Um until we reach full implementation at the bottom there by twenty-five, twenty-six. Um so right now, the TK average size, size is twenty-four. But what's different about UPK plan is making sure that there is a true adult-to-child ratio. So next year, there's a one-to-twelve ratio. And then the year after that, it's a one-to-ten ratio. Um and that's a requirement um by the state. So the, by twenty-five, twenty-six, which is the first full year of implementation. Districts are required to make TK available to all children who will have their fourth birthday by September first. Of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So this is huge um for our families, for our community. Um and making sure that our students are getting those essential times to uh learn how to write your name, how to cut with scissors. Different types of things that are essential to how they learn and how they grow. So um that's by twenty-five, twenty-six. So within the plan, there are five sections. There's vision and coherence, community engagement and partnerships. Workforce recruitment, professional learning, curriculum instruction and assessment, and then facilities, services and operations. We're currently working with business services um with Mr. Kraus. So we want to thank him and his team for helping us as we apply for grants. To work on the facilities portion of the implementation of this plan. On May nineteenth, uh we met with our, our transitional kindergarten teachers and several principals that currently have TK on their campuses. So what we did was we held the discussion as to what are their needs? Where do they see as areas in which we could learn and improve and build? Um these were some of the questions that we, we asked, how do we build on our TK program? What professional learning? Do you need to successfully implement TK? What do you need to help stu- support social, emotional learning and executive functioning skills in the TK classroom? What should discipline look like? So um any questions for consideration? And so all of those, we were able to gather quite a bit of input from our team to help us in our next steps and moving forward. So the following themes emerged out of those conversations. So uh teachers express and administrators, that group. Um express uh the need for training for the teachers. And also with that ratio change, they will need to have. Um uh you know, an aide or an assistant in the classroom. So training for them as well. How do you work with um four-year-olds is much different than what you would do with a seven, a middle school student. Um provide time for teachers to collaborate, um collaborate, integrate character education into the TK curriculum. Um behavior standards should be different for TK, but still encompassing. They are still a part of our plan to making sure PBIS is implemented. It would just be more age-appropriate for them. Um provide materials for the program that includes software, maybe update some furniture, supplies. Um going to a center-based model in which students can, you know, if you, if you've been in a class with four-year-olds, they don't always sit so still. For a long time. So um having a center base um where they're able to kind of rotate through these different stations. Um actually um has been research-based and shown to proven to um really help them in the long term. Provide any alternatives, uh seating interactions, interactive boards. Um they want to, and we, we specifically made a promise to this group that we would continue to meet regularly with them. Um so that we're specifically addressing the needs of early childhood, which is a very different thing than um some of our elementary, middle school needs. And we do want to make sure that we're expanding TK to offer to all of our elementary schools. So that every elementary school has a TK on there. So um currently, it's offered at five. Of our elementary schools. Next year, it will be six. And so we plan to um keep going from there. So the next steps are to work across departments to continue preparing for UPK implementation. And implementing UPK plan with fidelity in conjunction with our county partners. Thank you.
Trustees, do we have and any que- questions?
I'll just make a quick comment. I promise. I do want to say thank you again, Tasha. Um it was my understanding you weren't feeling good tonight. So I do want to say thank you very, very much for taking the time presenting and. Pushing through it. I do appreciate you, darling. And I hope you feel better soon.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Uh La French, Turner.
Again, thank you for that report. Um I'm looking forward to um. Uh UTK. And the implementation.
Trustee La La French, this, this is your, your.
No, it's so hard, it's, it's so heartwarming to me because, yes, this is my passion for the last twenty-plus years. Um however, I will save my questions for Dr. Dwight's on one-on-one. But I do appreciate um the opening. Of everyone, understanding just how much a TK and three and four-year-olds are, how important it is on the education for them. Before they enter into um the elementary schools and how much they should be supported. And I'm glad to see, even though I said one new school for this next coming school year, wish it could have been more than one. So I'll ask more about that at a different time. Um however, I'm just glad that everyone um um is. Out there supporting early childhood and how important it is for children to have that early start before they enter. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And all I have to say is just think, thinking about those little ones in the classroom all day, I'm all red. Ready, tie, tired. Like, I'm exhausted, just think, thinking about it. I'll, I'll, I'll stick with, with the fifth, fifth grade, gr- graders. That, that's my. I'll, I'll, I'll stick with, with the fifth, fifth grade graders. Now, that's my, my thing. But you know, T, TK, T, T, teachers, they are, they are a- angels. You know, my kids been benefited greatly from TK. I, I feel be because of that, their, their ed- ed- education went smoother, I, I, I guess. They, they didn't struggle. So I'm, I've al- always been a pro- proponent for, for that, that grade. So thank, thank, thank you, Doc, Dr. Dwyson. Okay, uh let's go ahead and go on real, real quick. Be, be before we move on to third, third thirteen, the consent agenda. It is nine-thir- thirteen. We are supposed to be done by nine-thirty. There's no way we can get this done by that time. I need somebody to make a motion to extend our me- meeting. I think we, we should just, again, like la- last time, do ten-third, third thirty. Hopefully, it doesn't last, but this way we can have enough time to get, get done.
Do you want at least eleven just to make sure we're good? Make, do eleven just to make sure we're good? Like I said, we don't have to finish.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, that's, that's fine.
Webster motions to extend till eleven PM.
Trustee Turner's second.
I don't want to say that.
I know. And okay, can you take, to, to, you take a vote, please?
Trustee Webster?
Hi.
Trustee Turner?
Hi.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Ben.
And Ben's eye, motion, motion pass passes for zero, zero, zero. Okay, so let, let's go, go home, go on to the consent agen- agenda. We will be take, taking i- items, third thirteen-point-zero-two through third thirteen-point-fifty. Does any trustee want to pull an item?
Um, trustee Turner, I would like to pull thirteen fifty.
Okay.
I would like to pull thirteen.
Forty-three, thirteen, thirteen-point forty-three. Okay, um, anything else? Tr- trustee La La French?
Now, the item I wanted to pull is already been pulled.
Okay, and I have none. So, okay, so. Let me try to read this correctly. So um taking I, um all I, items except uh third thirteen-point forty-three, thirteen-point-fifth fifty. Can, can I get a mo- motion?
Webster motions.
And can I get a sec- second?
Trustee Turner's second.
Can I get a vote, please? Yes, trustee Webster?
I.
Oh, I'm on my page here. Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee La French?
French, I.
Trustee Benz? Benz, I, motion passes for zero, zero. Okay, go, going on to fourteen, um I, items removed from the consent agenda. We will start at thirteen-point-four forty-three. Uh Webster, I believe you pulled that. Can, can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Yeah, uh Webster motions to approve.
Okay, and can I get a sec- second?
Trustee Turner's second.
Turner's second. Okay, um we're o- open for discuss- discussion. Yeah, well, I think we want to talk about it. Do we vote on it? Then, then you say the thing? So we, we have to vote on it and then they'll do their thing.
Oh, so we can't make comments after?
Do we want to make comments?
No, we'd like him to make the comments first, put the names in, let's be.
So, so we're, we're assumed.
Oh, that's, that's.
Yeah.
If, if we vote, then it's all.
Yeah, so we, we, we can vote and still dis- discuss it, right?
Or just make closing comment on it at least?
I think we can. Yeah.
If you take action, we know the name, so you can say the name and then I'll share out once there's a vote.
Okay, so let, let's vote. I agree, let's vote first. Okay, please vote. Okay, trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz? Benz, I, mo- motion pass passes for zero, zero. Now, we're going to get the info.
Yes, okay. We're changing protocol, so thank you for your patience, everybody. So applicant uh six-two-eight-two-two-dash-one is Vanessa Friedman. So Vanessa Friedman uh was recommended and now approved as coordinator of curriculum instruction. Uh so congratulations to Ms. Friedman. She's worked in the district for the past two years as an assistant administrator at Westside Park. She's been instrumental in supporting teachers and providing instructional leadership there. She's also coordinated local and state assessments since they've returned this year, as well as IEPs and student success teams. Uh previously, she was a classroom teacher for sixteen years in Orange County and was a, a previous assistant principal. So congratulations to Vanessa. I believe she's still on Zoom here. So again, if we give her a round of applause. So uh applicant six-two-eight-two-two-dash-two is actually uh Mr. Jonathan Wilson. He happens to be here in the audience, so congratulations to Mr. Jonathan Wilson. He is the, he will be the principal of Eagle Ranch Elementary effective July first, two thousand twenty-two. So Jonathan has worked his entire educational career here in the district. He's, he served as assistant administrator at Morgan Kincaid for the past five years. He was instrumental in coordinating MTSS groups, serving as the site PVS coordinator, providing instructional support to ensure students received a rigorous instructional program prior to his administrative position. Uh Jonathan was a teacher for nine years at Morgan Kincaid, Westside Park, Eagle Ranch, and Mesa Linda. On occasions, he actually supported uh his administrative colleagues by serving as a principal for the day at El Mirage this past year. So congratulations to uh Mr. Jonathan Wilson. Thank you for being here, uh Mr. Wilson.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh tr- trustees, com- comments? Who wants to start?
I would just like to say congratulations to both um the new coordinator of curriculum and instruction and the new principal at Eagle Ranch. I'm sure that both of you will do an extraordinary job um working in our uh curriculum department and also at our school site. So congratulations. Thank you.
Trustee La French?
Okay, so I don't want to take up too much time and repeat everything I said. So I just want to congratulate um both of you, Vanessa and Jonathan. Jonathan, I'm so excited for you. I truly am, and I appreciate, you know, all the things that you have done for our district. And um I know that you're going to do wonderful things over at um Eagle Ranch, and I'm excited for you. I truly am. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Web- Webster? Um so I will keep it brief, but I do want to say congratulations to both applicants and congratulations on your new adventures. This has got to be super exciting. And I have so much faith in you. I know you guys are gonna knock it out of the park. So I look forward to it and thank you. Congratulations again.
Okay, and all I, I will say is I'm expect, expecting great greatness. Nothing, nothing less, okay? Just kidding. No, congratulations, okay? Okay, let's go on to fifth fifteen, new bit business, uh fif- fifteen. Oh, we do have the other one. Sorry, I'm sorry. I got so excited. Okay, here we go. Uh third thirteen-fifth fifty, uh class enough classified purse personnel. Uh trustee Turner, I believe you did pull this. Can I get a mo- motion for amendment?
Okay.
Or, or because you want to want, we wanted this amended. Okay, we're going to do a mo- motion for amendment.
The reason I pulled this is.
Wait, wait, we, we gotta get a sec.
I second.
Sec, we, we get a, we, well, you motioned, I mean, need a sec- second?
Okay.
Webster's second. Webster, okay, now we're open for discussion, discussion.
The reason I pulled this is uh in the past, the district has always given a stipend for extra duty assignment. Um and I think that, that stipend was five percent of their current salary. So I had a, you know, we had a discussion with um Mr. Kraus regarding this. And I think that the district must remain consistent in how we um supplement our current employees when they're doing extra duties in another department. And I think that if we uh approve this, then it'll cause some major problems with other employees that, that are stepping outside their line of work to help another department when they're lacking or when someone find another job or if someone is out sick. So I just want to stay consistent with what we're doing. And uh we, in the past, we've given five percent incentive uh on their current pay. And um so that's why I pulled this item, for the board to consider that and look at what we've been doing in the past.
Uh trustees, and any other com- comments?
With the motion on right now, does that change this agenda item to the five percent?
Yes, yes, we're, we're um amend, mending it.
To the five percent stipend?
Yes.
So she still is going to get some form of compensation for extra.
Yes, yes. That was my only question. Shoot, okay, uh trustee La La French?
No, I have no comment.
Okay. Um and, and I have none, so let's call for the vote. Just to be clear, trustees, I have a motion by trustee Turner, second by trustee Webster, to amend to five percent pay for this item, correct?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz? Benz, I, motion passes for zero, zero. Okay, so that is the consent agenda. Let's go on to fifth fifteen new biz- business, uh fif- fifteen-point-zero-zero-one. Approved Board res- resolution, twenty-one-point-twenty-two-point-thirty-five, making five findings as re- required by A, A, B, three, six, six, one, to permit the Board of Trustees me- meeting to continue to be conducted by tel- telecon- conference while, while the COVID nineteen emergency remains in place. So we're going to do a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
I need a sec- second?
I second.
Okay, we're open for discussion, discussion?
Um, I think that, like today, you know, I, I really needed, I was going to call out today. But if I had called out and teleconference, then we would not have had a forum here and we would not have been able to meet today. I think by approving this, we're not approving to go into Zoom, but in the event that we don't have three people sitting at the dais, we can still have a meeting and conduct the business of the district. And I think that's important for us to do. COVID cases are arising. And um, you know, we still need to be able to do our business. And um if we're okay to be here, we can be here, but if not, then we don't want to jeopardize not being able to be here. And there's a lot of things that needed to be approved upon tonight because June thirtieth is just in a few days and July first is the start of a new year. So um I just want to make, to be proactive in making sure that we are can, can hold meetings during a state of emergency. So um it'd benefit us to approve this item. And, and like I said, we could still meet in public, but just be able to conduct the business of the district.
So uh approve, prove, proving this will not re- require us to be strictly Zoom?
No.
Right?
It'll work, yes.
Okay, I, I always thought it was that we had to do one or the other. So, okay.
Yeah.
I believe that is clarification from the attorney and Mr. Kraus. He could probably add to that, but you are able to do that. Okay, okay.
So essentially, all it's saying is it's giving us as board members the ability to come via Zoom in the occasion we needed to?
Yeah, should this have been already uh approved from the last one? Trustee Turner, uh being that she came down with uh being sick and was not able to she could have called in and we could have had her in Zoom, but because we did not have this approved, she actually needed to be here in person.
Okay, all right then. I'm fine with them. Okay, so let's call for a vote.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz? Benz, I, mo- mo- motion pass passes for zero, zero. But I'm still com- coming.
That's what I was saying. I'm still coming. Did you go? I still want food.
No, I'm coming anyway.
Okay. You can't come, well, no, but I still want the food. It's a good salad.
Okay, here we go. Go, going on to fif- fifteen-point-zero-two ac- academic ser- services, uni- universe rehearsal, pre-kin- kindergarten planning and em- implementation grant plan. I need a mo- motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I'll give that, that one to La French and we'll give the sec- second to Webster. Okay, um do we have to discuss- discussion? Call for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, motion passes for zero, zero. Go, going on to fif- fifteen-point-zero-three, approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school plans for stu- student achievement. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Webster, I motion.
Can I get a sec- second?
La French, I second.
Okay, we're open for discuss- discussion?
Just real quick, um in the past, um the board honored each, the principals of our schools to present their school site plans. But that changed. I was looking over some of the school site plans and, and I see low expectations for our students in some of our schools, not all. Um I hope that I'm reluctant to approve these, but I do expect them to come back for supplemental approval on those because when we set the standard, you know, um for high achievement, then our students do better. But if I'm looking at, and I won't say what school, you know, in math, one, once I put one, they expect an increase of one percent. You know, I'm disappointed in that because I think that that is very low expectations for our students. And then I look at other schools and I'm looking at a ten percent increase, you know? And, and that's more acceptable. And I think our students can do it. I, I know that they can do it. And so um I'll go ahead and approve these. But I, I, I really would like us to look when we create these school site plans that you have a plan in motion and, and you can work with that plan and expect high achievement for our students because they deserve that. And that's all.
Okay. Okay, and any other discuss- discussion? Hey, here, hearing none, call for, for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I. La French, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo- motion pa-passes four zero, zero. Okay, go going on to fif- fifteen point zero four. Um, uh, approval of the adop- adoption of the lo- local con-control and account countability. Plan and annual uh up-update for twenty twenty-two twenty-three school year. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I motion to approve.
Thank you, mo- motion by La French, I need a sec-second? Webster, I second. Okay, we're open for discuss- discussion?
I think I, you know, I pretty much um voiced my concern and um. During the presentation, so I'm good, I'm okay.
Okay, call for the vote, please. Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo- motion pa-passes four zero, zero. Okay, go going on to fif- fifteen point zero five, approval of the proposed twenty twenty-two twenty-three. Budget budget and mul- multi-year projec- projections for twenty twenty-three. Twenty-four and twenty twenty-four twenty-five.
I motion that we approve.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got stuck there. Uh, got a mo- motion by turn. Turner, can can I get get a sec-second? Webster, I second. Okay, we're open for discuss- discussion?
Mr. Kraus, could you uh talk about the proposed uh budget adjustments?
Yeah. Yes, thank you for that uh question. Uh, the governor and the legislature have come to an agreement. We are waiting for it to be signed, and there is some additional funding that is not reflected in this uh budget before the board this evening. The law allows districts to make a forty-five day revision to their budget, and we highly anticipate that. We will be bringing that those revisions back to the board to show you what changed from the time that this budget was created. Until the governor actually signs the state budget, and so uh we are optimistic that there is additional funding. Uh, that will be coming uh to to every district, including ours in the state, and again, we anticipate either July twelfth or the first board meeting in August. Bringing that budget revision back to the board and the community.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, call for the vote, please? Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo- motion passes four zero. Okay, go go going on to fif- fifteen point zero zero six, bus- business ser- services. Uh, pr- approval of Bertrandics to pro-provide main- maintenance for Riz-Rizograph cop. Copy ma-machines at George Vision. Visual Arts, I forget, and performing art school, and Eagle Ranch School. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Webster, I motion.
Okay, can I get a sec- sec-second?
La French, I second.
Okay, we're open for discuss- discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote?
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, motion passes four zero. Alright, go going on to fif- fifteen point zero seven, bit business services. Approval of the the architect slash in-engineer RFP dis- district proj- projects. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Turner, I motion to approve.
Can I get a sec-second?
Webster, I second.
Any discuss- discussion?
It's not really a discussion, but it is a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I was very excited to see this pool project last Friday to see. Um, have a little bit of time to speak with our maintenance and operations um in regards to this pool. And kind of get an idea of what they need to support it as well. So after seeing the condition and seeing what really does need to move forward on this, I feel. So much. More excited to see this final project, so. That was my only comment.
Okay, uh, my comment, I do have a thing, I've seen seen online where res. Residents were asking if odd- odda long- Lonto had a pool. Or swimming le- lessons for their their kids, and the the may. Mayor had expressed that he had spoke spoken to the dis- district, and the dis- district. Was, you know, re- re- repair- caring at, um, I'm really excited. This this pool can can bring our com- community great things, where kids can get. Swimming le- le- lessons, you know, fa- families can come and bring, you know, bring their kids, and. Um, I I saw, I'm I'm glad that the this is move move moving for- forward. So by neck next year, we have a well funct- functioning pool for for our kids. And for our com- commu- communities, so, okay, can we call, oh, I'm sorry.
I I I would like to say something, um, you know, every year, even, well, not last year, but the year prior to that. Every year, we talk about getting this pool repaired and fixed, and. Talk about it only need a pump, and then the pump can't get the parts for the pump, and there's a major problems with this pool. And the reason I um voted to approve this is because there's not much activity for our children in the summer. And it's hot, and it's gonna get even hotter. And I can't wait to see this pool in operation next year. And hopefully, it will be in operations next year, because. Again, like trustee then said, our kids need this, our parents need this, our community need this pool. And last two years ago, we were talking about how much we were gonna charge, knowing that this pool was not ready to even. Stick your toe in, you know? So I know it's a lot of work, and I know it's costly, but it's very, you know, it it's a needed necessity in this community. So I'm looking forward to that, finally, looking forward to that. And if for any reason, they say that this pool will not be operational next summer, then I will be very upset. Very upset. We've been talking about this for years now, a lot of years, too many years. Okay, and that's all I have.
Well, let let's call call the votes, so we 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 can get get to this ball roll- rolling. Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, motion passes four zero, zero. Okay, go going on to fif- fifteen point zero eight, business ser- services off. Auth- authorization to piggyback on bids. RFPs, RFQs, award warded by uh other pub-public aid agencies. Can can I get a mo- motion to to approve?
Webster, I motion to approve.
Can I get a sec-second?
Turner, second.
Okay, um, we're open for discuss- discussion. Uh, Mr. Kraus, I'm sorry, so sorry to put. Put you on the spot, but it just came came to me now. Can you give a brief o- overview on what what this is? So the pub-public can can know?
Absolutely, thank you, Madam President and board members. So when a district brings a piggyback to the board for approval. The organization, in this case, the County of Los Angeles, already went out to bid for these services, and they received a bid. It was approved by the county. What we can do as a entity is piggyback on their bid. And use the same pricing that they get for our district, so because we're smaller in size. It seems like the bigger you are, you get a better price point as a as an organization, so the County of LA gets a better price point. And then we're able to piggyback on that cost and get it cheaper than if we went out to bid as a small organization. And so anytime you see piggybacks, that's the uh the way that it usually works, and it really gives small districts like us a price advantage. Uh, a lot of the times, and we may not use it, or we may use it, but by the board approving it, it does give us that ability if the opportunity arises to do that.
Okay, alright, thank, thank you. Okay, um, tr- trustees, ques- questions or com- comments? Okay, here, here, hearing none, please call for the vote. Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo- motion passes four zero. Go going on to fif- fifteen point zero nine, approval of the agreement with. Cal- California State U- University, San Bern- Bernardino for diet. Dietetic, I'm sorry, I got sick on that, di- dietic? Interns, that's a weird, I think that's the. Dietetic, dietetic, okay. In- interns. Can I get a mo- motion to to approve?
Turner, motion to approve.
Webster, I second.
Webster, by second, we're open for discuss- discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote?
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, motion passes five zero, four zero. Alright, going on to fifteen point ten, human re- resource sources. Of approval for the Board of Trustees of an increase in the med- medical insurance cap. To eighteen thousand, thousand six hundred fif- fifty-two, effective Jul- July first. Twenty twenty-two, and an increase to life insur- insurance to one hun- hundred fif- fifty-thousand-dollar. Dollars effect effective Jul- July first to twenty twenty-two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Turner, I motion.
Okay, can I get a sec-second?
Webster, I second.
Okay, we're open for discuss- discussion?
I wish Eckes was here, because she the, she's the one that brought this agenda, but it's okay, um. She's not here.
Okay.
I have no comment.
Okay, well, I have none too. Uh, can I get a uh vote, please?
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz?
Trustee Benz, I. Motion pa-passes four zero, zero. Move, moving on to fif- fifteen point eleven, human re- resource sources. Approval of the proposed in- increase in life life insur- insurance for C- C- CSEA. Bar bargaining u- unit members from twenty thousand, thousand to fifty thousand, thousand. Effective Ju- July first, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Turner, I motion.
And can I get a sec-second?
La French, I second.
Le French, okay, I'll give that to La French, we're open for discuss- discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote?
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz? Benz, I, mo- mo- motion pa-passes four zero. Okay, move, move, moving on to fif- fifteen point twelve. Approval of the proposed in- increase of the health insur- insurance premium cap. For S- for CSEA barg- bargaining u- unit. Mem- members effective Ju- July first, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Turner, I motion to approve.
And can I get a sec-second?
La French, I second.
Thank you. We're open for discuss- discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote?
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, motion passes four zero. Okay, so we should, we need to motion to go back to close session. Session for the ta- tabled i- item of three point zero three.
Turner, motion.
Okay, so.
Webster, I second.
Let me get a mo- uh tabled motion. Cause I'm out of second. Okay, so got a motion by trustee Turner, second by trustee Webster. Can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz, uh, trust- trustee Benz, I, motion passes four zero. Okay, we uh, the time is now nine four forty-nine. Okay, thank you, um, I, the time is now ten four forty-three. I need a roll, roll call, please?
Trustee Webster? Trustee Turner?
Yeah.
Trustee La French?
La French, present.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, pres- present, the time is, yeah, ten four four four. Okay, so re-regard guarding, I I done three point zero zero three. The the board has take taken ac- action to to appoint Mi- Mr. Mike, Mike, Michael Kraus. Um, as in in interim su- super in in ten-tendant. With sig- signature uh authority be begin getting Jul- July first, twenty twenty-two. And that's it? Okay, okay, so going on to six sixteen, uh adjournment. I need a mo- motion to approve.
A motion to adjourn, Turner?
Okay, I need a sec-second? Okay, Webster, second. Call for for the vote, vote, please?
Trustee Webster?
Oh, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo- mo- motion pa-passes four zero, zero, the time is now ten four forty-five. Please have a good night.